I'm going to call the meeting to order, April 10th, 2013, and it's 5:03 PM. We have a few adjustments to the agenda. We're going to remove 5.1, the policy discussion items. We're going to remove from the consent agenda 7.3, policy adoption. And we're going to remove 5.4, discussion calendar snow days. You'll do that at the local, in your local boards.
Can I just jump right in there and say that at the local board, there will be an adjustment to the agenda that will move that from an action item to a discussion item. You're not ready for action. We want to hear, we are thinking about it, but we're not expecting you to take any action on that.
So we have graduation date in our locals?
You can let your administration know what you're apt to do, but here's the issue. Right now, the way the calendar is falling, the last student day would be Monday. Likely, all of you, I just saw the look, will say, oh, well, no, we'll waive that last day for students. Should we have another snow day, though, we don't have the option to waive that next day. So I think it's premature for us to say that we're going to waive the days, but you can let your administration know that you're inclined to waive the day if there's only one. And you can still set your graduation date.
Oh, you can, and then the kids just come back?
Or not. The eighth graders.
We're getting caught off the hook.
Yeah.
Okay. So further adjustments to the agenda, we're adding 6.3. We're going to ask for action to add a .20 FTE, English Language Learner Educator, for Shelburne. And I will note that typically in April is when we usually adopt the CSSU budget, after all the town meetings and local budgets, but because we had two boards, Williston and Charlotte, that are going back to their voters, we're going to wait until after you have your votes, and those are scheduled for April 30th and May 7th. So the next regular CSSU board meeting will have on the agenda as an action item, adopting the CSSU budget. And then executive session, it's the CSSU Board Executive Session. We're going to try to skedaddle out of here as soon as we can, you know, 6:45 and maybe a few minutes before that if we can. And other board members from other local boards are invited into that meeting.
We are calling it a joint executive session of all the boards.
Okay.
So just so that everybody, it's not like we're inviting them, they are part of the executive session.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I know that's how we build it.
Okay. And then, I think that's it. Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Anybody? Okay. And I'm just sending around for CSSU Board members, if you could give me your preferred email address for me to contact you, because for some of you, I have three addresses. So you'll see that coming around. Okay. So Audience and Communications, 3.0. No, I guess not. So 4.0, Reports to the Board, or 4.1, our Central Office Leadership Team Report.
Elaine? I'm going to start with the legislative update and then kind of point you to a couple parts of the report. There are some real normal things going on in the General Assembly these days, the stuff that you've been hearing about all year long around prepaid, around flexible pathways, around A to P. There are also some stirrings going on, I think started this week around, as I'm hearing it, the fact that budgets are up $7 million this year and only 14 budgets passed. Small consolation to me, since I've got two of those. And so there is a bill that's been written up that's in house ways and means, I believe, that includes voting on SU budgets. And on its face, if you don't get into the details too much, it's not, it sounds like, oh, well, you know, maybe the voters ought to vote on the SU budget. But they're not talking about just the SU budget, that is, the core administration part of it. They're talking, we would need to vote on even the purchase services. And here's the deal about that and why you should care about that. If on the same day, we simultaneously vote for budgets and all of the locals vote to support their budgets, and the SU budget fails, none of you have a budget, because built into our budget are all of the purchase services that we've brokered for you, some of which are required by law. So I think I'm going to be testifying tomorrow in house ways and means. If you get a chance, you might want to send out a note. And it's not about, don't vote on SU budgets. It really is about, how do we do this in a way that doesn't stop the train? And, you know, I don't even know how we would get it going again. So.
Besides the mechanics, it kind of goes against putting things together to be more efficient.
Exactly.
Because what you really want to do in that case is stop sharing that stuff to avoid that.
Exactly. That would be the first thing that would happen. We would just send it all back. We'd say, well, we can't be put in this kind of situation. And I know that's not the intention.
Especially when we move special ed into that.
Exactly.
Budgets can be a big number that.
It is going to be a huge number. Or as Bob pointed out, in Act 156, we had to incorporate coordinating transportation for all the SUs. So how much money does that, that goes into the SU budget this year?
224.
220,000.
We recorded both in Charlotte and in CSSU.
So you can imagine, the voter sees that and says, wow, there's a big increase. They must have money they can cut. It's not our money. I mean, if you cut it, it does nothing to us. So anyway, it's a little concerning that at this late date, that all of a sudden this is happening. And it's in a money committee. So it's not, it's not just chatter in the background. So that's the legislative. As I said, there is a report in here. The other stuff is all the stuff you've been hearing about during the whole cycle. Bob's been doing some good work around food service, and I thought maybe he might highlight.
It's highlighted in the material. I was lucky enough to spend two days with Dr. Janet Appen-Del, who is the author of Free For All: Universal Meals for Schoolchildren. And it was exciting, two days, the first day was her and 70 other leaders across the state trying to bring to us the conversation that it's time we do something different with the school meal structure in the state of Vermont. And the second day was an open forum for anyone who aren't interested in hearing much of the speech. I don't do her justice, but I might sell her books. So I'll just read from you the flyer on the back. It says, "How did our children end up eating nachos, pizza, and tater tots for lunch in a book that takes us on an eye-opening journey into the nation's school kitchen? Janet offers the first comprehensive assessment of school food in the United States. Opening a window onto our culture as a whole, she reveals the causes, the financial troubles of schools, the commercialization of childhood, the reliance on market models that determine how lunch is served. Free For All: Fixing School Food in America concludes with a sweeping vision to change it. Fresh, healthy food for all children is a regular part of the school day." And that does a good summary. It's a little more in-depth if you read the whole book. But the premise is that where we are today with school food is not where anyone envisioned, planned, or wanted to be to go back 10, 15, 20, or 40 years. It's a series of unfortunate efforts to do something somewhere on the perimeter of school food. So it's a rewarding two days. The exciting thing is there is kind of a conversation going on in the state now at that level. The legislature is actually considering, or close to passing, a law that changes the way we serve lunch in schools. It's a small step, but it, in essence, funds permanently, be able to state the cost necessary to remove the distinction between people, kids who qualify for meals and kids who qualify for meals. We insanely think we have the ability to accurately narrow the measurement, to sort kids into two lines in our gap areas, and give some a free lunch and some a partially free lunch. This provides state money to eliminate that silliness and provide free lunch for any kids that are qualifying or near qualifying. We could be the first state to do that. And so it's exciting that that's going to take shape. The conversation has begun, as my point.
So in CSU, and every one of our groups, I think, is deciding that there is a healthy food and healthy living environment in every one of our schools. I mean, the changes just in the last seven years that I've been here, I really think that we have community groups that are very engaged in working in partnership through the schools. And so I think that we're ahead of this curve, not that we don't have work to do. I feel good about where we are. Bob's involved in a lot of those conversations for reasons. He's been doing good work.
Molly, might you say something about summer professional development?
Just quickly in your packet, I have a couple paragraphs about some exciting summer technology coursework that the SU is providing. Actually, the SU is, I'm just logistically organizing our great leaders, teacher leaders and technologists who are creating courses for teachers in several areas of tech integration. And in the course of teachers using their DIP to pay for their course, part of that funding will also go to purchase of hardware. You may or may not know, I bet you do know, that all around the state, there are workshops like crazy that lure people to take them because you get a free iPad, and you get a this and a that, and so everyone goes. And it may or not be, may or may not be a quality workshop, and it may or may not be about, so how do I use this in my teaching to move things forward? So we are sort of harnessing our energy to provide those courses in-house with great teachers, some teacher leaders in, who are sort of ahead of the curve as well as our tech integrations. So we have four courses being offered, and right now, two of the courses are full. We just barely put the word out a week and a half ago, and so obviously, people are interested.
Molly, can you clarify how the money works on that? Because $1,200 cost for the course, and it says, that includes the purchase of your device up to $800.
Yep.
But that could be a $400 net book?
Yeah. So if someone wants to buy something that is more expensive than that, they kick in their own money to do that. When this was piloted first last year, which is what we tend to do, is test something out, see if it's a good idea, refine it, and then put it out to everybody. So last summer, when we tried this out in Williston, the purchase went pretty well. Most people wanted to get an iPad, and that was within the realm of possibility with the money that breaks out that way. Someone got a Mac, someone enhanced the software for their smart board. There were a variety of things, but mostly, people want to figure out the use of all these great apps with kids. And so that was, that's the highest demand.
But as far as cost to the SU, it could be less than $1,200. Is that what, is that how it works?
Well, out of the DIP, our teacher, our leadership who are running the courses are paid. And then there's use of the 800. I think there was a little left over last summer. I don't think it was a lot, but there was a little bit left over that went right back into the DIP pot at that school. So yes, is the answer.
But what's really, all of that is exciting. And another piece that's exciting is that then the work that the teachers are doing during these classes relates specifically to the work that we're doing in our schools. And that's also a huge advantage to, yeah.
So I'm, so I'm not clear. So who owns the hardware after that?
For the first two years, it's owned by the school, but the person who participated in the course to learn all about it and how to integrate it and develop a student project as an outcome of the course and all that, has pretty much sole access. But it's owned by the school for the first two years. And after that, basically, it's our policy across the SU, I believe, that once, once it's with the school for a couple of years, then it becomes personal property.
This is coming out of their personal professional development funds that they already have that pays for UVM courses, or St. Michael's courses, or whatever? So it's, it's kind of the teacher's fund, so to speak?
The difference is if they go to a VPA workshop, say, on iPads, and the lure is, you get a free iPad, and that belongs, at the moment, the way those have gone, and we're still in conversation about it, but those have belonged to the attendees, even if we're not sure they, at that workshop, gained skills to really use it in an embedded fashion in their instruction. Whereas we now can control that. Every participant will design a project that has to do with their instruction using their new device.
Anything else?
Will you talk about the vision calendar at all that's in here?
I actually have, right here, another calendar. So we're calling it Calendar 2.0 now. And I live in Williston tomorrow when you get the Williston Observatory, probably see an article, I'm guessing, because I was interviewed today and yesterday by the Addison Independent. There's some energy around the calendar. We are just now, the regional superintendents, because this is where this work is happening, it's the Champlain Valley Superintendent, all Chittenden County Superintendents, all Franklin County Superintendents, Grand Isle County Superintendents, and three of the Addison County Superintendents. That's that group. We have just put together a, an outreach plan where we would start meeting with our families, communities, community partners, the Ford Center, that kind of thing, to start talking about, okay, what are your questions? What are the things that we need to figure out? How can we work, figure this out together? And I do have a Calendar 2.0 Option B that kind of was like fine tuning it. What it does is, you might remember, those of you who have seen this calendar before, actually, there's one in your packet. There were a couple chopped up weeks in the fall, in October, and in November, this gets rid of that. It just makes like a full week in October and a full week in November. I think the key thing to remember is this is 175 days. The 175 days required by statute are the days that are in here. That calendar that you adopted last month, that's what this represents. Then locally, we would start talking about, okay, where do we plug in professional development days? Where do we plug in parent-teacher conference days? What are we doing with what we're calling those intercessions? What are the opportunities that we're going to provide for kids for interventions, but also for kids for enriching activities and for families in terms of childcare? So we're already exploring that. The regional superintendents as a group are talking about that, but even in Chittenden South, we're starting to talk about, what could that look like? So.
I guess what kind of intrigued me was, in your quote in the Free Press, you're saying that, you know, this calendar, since it's 175 days, there's no additional.
Money.
Money. But the fact is, the power of this calendar is being able to pull kids back who are not succeeding during those breaks.
Right.
So we would have, I think we need to start planning on, I mean, to do that well, you're going to have to pay a teacher to do that. So.
And we already do, though. We pay teachers for after-school work. We pay teachers for work in the summertime. We have lots of Title I work that we do, that we try to do during the school day at the same time, and we fight over when we're going to find time in the schedule. Because let's just take the example of a young child who's not learning to read at the same rate that we would hope they would, and they now need a second dose of reading instruction. Well, where in their day do they get that? Because it can be when.
Believe me, I'm totally on board. I think this is brilliant, and we're finally going to make some progress with kids who are struggling. But I'm just thinking in the head that it's, I think to do it well, we're going to find some money. And you're just saying there may be money at a place.
Yeah. But I think it's also reallocating resources.
Okay.
It's reallocating the resources that we have. We haven't figured that all out, and that's the next part of the work, too. But I think that when we have this conversation around the principal's table, every principal there feels like, yes, there is, we, we can do this. Now, it could be that we'll end up and go, whoa, we're short here. So what are we going to do here? And we'll, we'll have to figure that out. We recognize there's no money tree, and a sure way to doom this is to include a whole lot.
So the next steps with this, Elaine?
Public engagement.
Okay. And that's where we'll get more questions related to, is it a net zero in cost and so forth?
Well, don't worry about the public. I'm worried about missing an opportunity.
The boards.
I mean, I think the board ought to stop, start planning for it. It's a great opportunity if we can take advantage.
Thank you.
Okay. Keith, I think you have an email list that's going on. Can we just shoot it back this way? I'm just trying to collect email addresses for me to contact. Some of you, I have multiple addresses. And Josh, there's a seat over here if you wanted to get off the end. You're welcome to.
Can I ask?
Yes, please do.
Are there issues on the vision calendar?
AP exams, which I understand, start right at the beginning of May?
We'll have to figure that out. I mean, we haven't been around. I'm coming to CVU next Tuesday, I think. Anyways, all, ever, all of the superintendents I mentioned before, one of the very next things we're doing is visiting with all of our staffs. So if that's an issue, that's one we're going to have to figure out.
So Elaine, would you like local boards to weigh in on this in any way? Or how do you want to channel questions that are coming up? Or when you say public engagement, how do you envision that?
Yeah, well, I would rather plan the public engagement rather than just have an informal discussion at this point. So maybe at the board chairs meeting, that would be a good discussion. How do we want to do that at the board level? Is that, do we want to take time at the retreat, for example, to have a facilitated, focused conversation around what is it that needs to happen and what will it look like for Chittenden South?
Okay. Bob? Okay. All right. Are there questions on anything in the Central Office Leadership Team Report? I just have one quick question. It's, what I understand is that we're going to get an update on the multi-tiered systems of support, and then we're also going to get a request to look at the way that we do purchase services, or whether, for special education, whether it's purchase services or CSSU assessments by the ADM at the local level. And I would just ask that as your committee work is moving forward, that you think about how those two fit together, perhaps? And help us understand how the multi-tiered system and the special ed interact, and whether, the way that they interact drives one assessment methodology over another. Does that make sense?
But what I would say is, we've by design made our approach to consolidation connect the two things, so that our need to pull one tier of our support system over to the SU doesn't impact our ability to be flexible and efficient and effective with all of our tiers. So the answer to the question is absolutely yes, and we can make sure that when we, when that's a longer topic, that we draw that connection for you, so you can see.
Okay. Okay, great. And I imagine that'll be on Bob's plate as well, as far as assessment? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Administrative Compensation Committee update. This is just a brief update of, we're moving forward with that. Jeanne went through and was comparing one report to another. We don't want to distribute it widely until we've made sure that we've redacted anything that needs to be redacted, but our intent is to share publicly the work that was done for us. And then our thought is that it might be a really good retreat agenda item. So you'll get reports sent to you by email, so you have time to read through it carefully, and then we'll spend a little, little bit of time on it at the retreat of, what are the next steps? How do we implement any policy? And we're going to work on a draft policy as well to go along with that. And committee members, anyone else want to add anything? Okay, good. Thank you. 5.0, Discussion Matters. We're at 5.2, the CSSU Board Composition, Additional CVU Representation. We're not discussing that here. We just left it on the agenda because there was a request that perhaps it be an action item here, but we realized that really the local boards need to talk about that first, and that's not going to happen until after this meeting. So your locals will talk about it, give feedback, and then we'll put this on as an action item next month. So that's just there as a placeholder, so we don't lose it. Okay. 5.3, Legislative Breakfast. Again, this is an update Monday morning, next Monday, April 15th, 7 to 9 o'clock, is our legislative breakfast, and it's in, it's here at CVU, it's in the library classroom. And those of you who.
7:30, huh?
7:30?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe I just had seven, so I wouldn't be late.
That's why I'm too sure. That's why I look. You can come and sit.
I'll get early dibs on the bagels.
How about Colleen on this?
That's because I wrote that.
Okay.
We'll double check. So the, those who had volunteered to be on a committee, I sent you a Google Doc today, will work by electronically and just putting together a draft agenda. So you'll, if you haven't seen that, you should have that. 5.4, we removed. So we're at 6.0, Action Matters. And 6.1, we need a motion to adopt the local K-8 calendar. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Someone?
In a second?
Second.
And discussion. Elaine, do you want to?
I would just say, this pretty much mirrors the calendar that we have this year. No half-days. We traded two, four half-days for two professional development days, and four half-days for two parent-teacher conference days. But it looks just like the calendar we have this year.
At the K-8s.
At the K-8s only.
CVU's a whole different game.
It should say K-8 at the top there. We'll make that change.
Okay. Lisa?
180 student days to 175 student days.
176 in this calendar, and we did that two years ago at, when we were dealing with a lot of community pushback on taking half-days for, we were doing four half-days for parent-teacher conferences and four half-days for professional development. And I think, I was certainly hearing from the community and many board members also saying, we would rather have full days, even if it means fewer full days. So, I mean, it would be.
I remember the full days. I didn't remember that we had.
They're traced.
Yeah, okay.
That is what it is.
Other questions on this? Okay. All those in favor of adopting the CSSU local K-8 calendar is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Abstentions? Motion carries? 6.2, this is a request to authorize the board chair to endorse CSD transportation agreement, and that's just, somebody needs a signature. So need a motion to approve a second, and then we can discuss it.
Someone?
In a second. And discussion, Bob, I'll ask you to explain.
Well, this is new this year. Transportation services needed to be, per law, now provided by the SU, beginning in the 13, 14 school year. Our interpretation of the law is that we can continue to accommodate individual school needs to provide their transportation or individual board or community wants. Charlotte is currently providing transportation by Text Transportation, and that contract is in need of an additional renewal. So this document does that. It's signed by Colleen on behalf of the Charlotte Board and Charlotte School District, and has to be approved at this level, since you're all responsible for provisioning transportation across the SU.
This is a great day. More bus stuff.
Yeah. Food service, bus stuff. Josh?
Are you asking that Charlotte identify CSSU for any costs associated with this contract?
We'll see that that occurs. If you'd like a legal document to that effect, you and the Charlotte Board can negotiate that.
And Jeanne?
We're pretty good at keeping track of you.
Can I just say that, too?
Any other questions?
Have you spoken to them already?
Them who?
Betcha?
Yes.
And so, I'm just reading this, you're looking at an extension that would hold the prices, resistance to the cost of working.
Yes, there, there, an agreement that they're going to do that. And that's what you have funded Charlotte for here. You had a pre-warn.
Right. Make sure I understood it. And the cost of living, is that a strict earned tax?
The law on extension of existing contracts says they can be extended if the index for increases here is the index that we said, New England Economic Price Index. And the Betcha has offered an interest to secure the subsequent agreement, holding the cost back.
Actually, Kelly, there's a general question that I don't think asked, but is the management of this changing, or is it just? of this changing, or is just the signature at the bottom? I mean, I assume the Charlotte Board's gonna decide, you know, what they can afford and how it's gonna work and all the rest as usual, right?
We're trying to do it as usual. We'll see if, how that plays out. But right now, I and Greg and Audrey, the two principals in the school, have been a significant amount of time getting us this far. That happens every time there's a contract in between that. CSSUs are all relatively limited.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I just remember a couple years back, like CVU had to reduce spending on transportation, and we, that was a decision we made because it's in our budget, but, you know, that hasn't changed for Charlotte, I would assume.
Right.
Other questions on this item? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Six point three, need a motion to approve the addition point two FTE for an English-language learner educator position for Shelburne.
Some motion.
In a second, please. And-
Is this what we put in the budget?
Well, who wants to explain this one?
Molly, this would be yours. Suddenly, there's a bursting of students from other countries at the Shelburne School. And when I have talked to the ELL teacher there, we already sort of upped them a little bit as this began to encroach at the beginning of the year. But now they have the highest number of students who are non-English speaking or little English-speaking of any of our schools, and have less sort of personnel to deal with those kiddos. So their proportion is off at this point because the enrollment took a leap. So this is just something for the end of this year to support specifically those kiddos who really are in classrooms and do not, are not able to function. And then we will reassess because, or relook at the situation, partly because sometimes these families are transient. So working with ELL and personnel and shifting is a moving target, I'm learning, and so it's possible that one particular family that arrived may leave by August, but we're not sure.
And to get back to the budgetary question, we didn't anticipate, we just have to find this in the budget.
Yeah, I didn't comprehend that it was this year, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're running a positive variance, so.
I was just gonna ask if you guys were okay with it.
They're on top of it.
And you need to follow these kids for many years and do assessments targeted for their particular needs and so forth, so it's not something that's gonna disappear.
And even if they move away, if they're transient and homeless, we, they still might choose to be in Shelburne, or in any one of our other schools. That's a choice that they make, not that we make.
Right.
Can I ask, is it a, for as far as population, are the numbers large or small, or is it multiple families or one family, is it crossing grade levels?
It's multiple families and it crosses many grade levels.
Are you talking about the very recent newcomers?
Yes.
Yeah, like since Chris, since the holidays.
Yeah. Then I just have more of a, maybe of a community question. When something like that happens, is the SU contacted by like, I'm assuming there's some housing assistance going on, there's some other community assistance happening at some level, when a group comes in, in such a way? I just wonder-
Sometimes.
Are there representatives that might contact you?
It depends, it depends on the situation, you know, whether they're working with resettlement project in Burlington, then there'd be contact, but sometimes, like I can think of a family that just arrived in one town, no organization affiliation.
I just meet in a situation like this, where it require, where it really is spurring a personnel-
Yes, even in a situation like this, they might just show up.
They might just show up as a group.
And in another case, we might know for two weeks, and then everybody mobilizes and-
Exactly, yeah, that's what I wanted to know how.
So it's both, those things happen.
Do we know the variety of languages, what languages they are?
Uh, let's see, I think there are three new languages, and I know that one is Bantu, but I don't know the others right now.
Well, Burlington boasts fifty-six languages on their site, so.
Across the SU, it's twenty-three, but I, the brand-new ones right now, I'm not absolutely sure.
Are there questions on this item? This is a Shelburne issue, and it's just funneling through the SU. Okay, all those in favor of approving the addition of point two OFTE, ELL for Shelburne, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? And Molly, we're getting closer to your, you know, we're gonna get you up there early, so we're moving right along. Seven point O, Molly has a lot to share with us, so we're gonna give her some time. Seven point O consent agenda, we had removed seven point three, the policy adoption, and we, so in the consent agenda, it's seven point one and seven point two. Need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We'll just do, just confirming a few next meeting dates. The legislative breakfast, next Monday, seven thirty a.m. Policy Committee next week's on Wednesday, eight a.m. And policy, who on the CSSU board is on policy? I know I'm going. And then, are there others? Yeah, okay, so we're well represented. New board member orientation, I don't know if you wanna say anything about that, Elaine?
I hope that some of the board chairs will come, and I will be sending out an invitation to any new board members who were new last year. Invite them as well to come if they'd like. But it is nice, there's a part of the agenda that is us saying, here's how we're structured, here's how it all works. There's a part of the agenda that is, let's talk about what it really is to be a new board member, boots on the ground, and you're at the vegetable bin at Shaw's, and somebody comes and says, hey, I think blah, blah, blah. How do you handle that? That's handled best by current board members, so we invite board chairs to come and have that conversation with new board members. So I hope some of you board chairs will be there.
Okay. And then our regular meetings, May eighth. And just a reminder, there's a negotiations planning meeting next Monday at five p.m., so there are a few of us that are doing that, and it's planning for a recommendation that's gonna come to boards and planning for joint training. So we've got a busy couple weeks. And we're at nine point O, common topic, we're fifteen minutes ahead of, twenty minutes ahead of schedule, Molly. Making up for some of those times that we cut you off short before. So everyone got a, in their packet, this presentation, so if you wanted to go through it ahead of time, you've had an opportunity, but-
Colleen, if I could just interrupt your saying-
Yeah, please.
Do we think that there are people who were planning to get here at six o'clock to hear this presentation?
Ah. Maybe we should-
I know, I think our principals were planning to try to get here for it, so.
Can we do our executive session first?
No, the executive session is for, what's that? Our executive session is on all-
It looks like we have some time, so.
Let's just consult for a moment, un momento. So, um- Oh, okay, go ahead.
As long as we have a couple minutes, I did send out a note to all board members about the spring superintendent's and special ed administrative conference that happens yearly at Lake Maury. This year, the focus of that, the theme of that is a world-class education, and I want to remind you that that is the Superintendent's and School Boards Association joint work around a policy agenda. And the people who are gonna be there on Thursday are all superstars. I mean, it's really, it's a really, really good agenda, so if you don't remember this mailing, I'd be happy to send it back out to you, but please consider attending. On Thursday, on Wednesday afternoon, the Superintendent's and School Boards Association is inviting superintendents and board chairs to a policy meeting that will have Nick Donahue from the Nellie May Foundation, somebody from the Business School at Dartmouth, who will be facilitating and listening to a policy, policy discussions amongst the superintendents and board chairs. And from that, mapping out, here's what I'm hearing you guys say, here is the direction that you might take. I hope some of you will be able to do that, and it's billed as board chairs, it doesn't have to be board chairs. If they can't find enough, even a couple board chairs, I certainly, you know, let me know if you'd like to be part of that. I think that we have some really, really very effective, good board members in Chittenden South, and it would be great if your voice was heard in, in a situation where there will be statewide impact. So let me know.
And as long as we're just open to, oh, go ahead, Lauren.
I just have a question, are you gonna send us the agenda for-
For the legislative breakfast?
It's out to committee, and yes, you will have that, everyone will have that. And you'll be able to amend. So as, as long as we have a few moments, if we could go back to the legislative issue related to SU budget, and Elaine, if you could give us some guidance about the most effective way for us to act on that? I think it's probably something we wanna make sure is on our agenda next Monday.
Joan, did you just hear that question? So it's the issue around the legislative work right now around trimming education costs and coming up with different bills. One bill that addresses a number of things. The one that affects us the most is the piece around SU budget, but there are others. For instance, they're lowering the threshold for excess spending. They are increasing the, there are a couple-
Whole harmless.
Whole harmless provision, there are a couple things like that, like if you're declining enrollments now, you will, there's a lower level of whole harmless. But the one that I'm most concerned about is the piece around the SU budget. So Colleen's question is, if we, if there are people here who would like to have an impact, who would be the best people to contact?
All of our local legislators?
I think on Monday morning, on Monday morning, we should talk about this, yeah.
I think so. I would say you, education committees, the House and Senate, and you can let the local people know that you're watching them, but we're not as involved if it's not our committee. And we don't have, Jimmy Lyons is no longer on Senate Ed, so we don't have-
So we could send a list of, list out of who's, I mean, it's on the website of who's on the committees, but, but an individual email to members of the committee?
Yes.
Is that most effective, do you think?
They're the ones working on it. Otherwise, I would go to my colleagues in education and say, my supervisory district is concerned, but it's, and that helps, that's why I said send it to them, but the ones working on it.
I think it's House Ways and Means that's working on it. I think it's Janet Ansell.
Yeah. Looking at funding mechanisms for it.
So I just wanna be clear, for me, it's not about should we vote on the SU budget. It's that if we vote simultaneously on an SU budget that includes the entire big purchase services piece, and you guys know over the years how much we've tried to draw a very bright line between what is, here's what it costs to run your superintendent's office, and here's all that stuff that we broker for you, and the only reason it's in our budget is because you need it, and this is the most cost-effective way for us to do this, the most cost-effective way for you to do this. If simultaneously you're voting on local budgets and the SU budget, and the SU budget fails, you guys don't have a budget. And now, where do you even start? I mean, to me, that just stops the train, where do you even begin? To figure out, you can't put out contracts, you can't put out, you can't post jobs, you know, it really would be a huge mess. So if they can figure out some way to separate out, here's the stuff that we're just, kind of like a New York State BOSI system, we broker costs for you, and that's over here, it's already in your budgets, people already vote for that. And now, here's the SU budget, that is the superintendent, the HR director, the fiscal, the COO, the pieces that are strictly the central office.
I'm still kinda noodling on a vote that's gonna be five million dollars of central office budget and thirty-five million dollars of special ed. People are voting on a forty million dollar budget, thirty-five will be special ed, so what if they vote down?
That's exactly the point, though. Because right now, special ed when they're there, but even right now, it's your psych services, it's your technology.
I know, but I'm just saying it's gonna be ten times as worse.
Exactly.
With no wiggle room, I don't know what you do, except keep going back and going back until you get a yes vote, which, you can't say no in special ed.
And no wiggle room, because they are required services.
Right, right.
Can you just, what didn't vote on the stuff that's-
Well, that's what I wanna talk to them about tomorrow.
That might be a midpoint.
Yep.
But even if you do, it's so easy for a local community to say, I don't care about that, oh, no, even if you split it out.
I mean, it's hard to have accountability, I mean, if I was paying for it.
So another part of this bill, and it's like a ten, twelve-page bill, another part of the bill is they're charging the agency of education to come up with minimum superintendent, principal, teacher, and staff to student ratios. So we're made in the shade there. We really are. If that's, if that's what comes out of it, they say, okay, here's a measure of, are you being efficient? We'll be fine. Because our ratios are big.
So we're having an impromptu discussion, and Kath, you have the draft of the agenda. If you could take some notes of what you're hearing here, so that we can make sure that we get it on our agenda for Monday. You know, any topics that come up, and another topic that I might propose, and if you have other ideas related to legislation that you wanna make sure that we talk about Monday, or that maybe we might need to act on, but I'm just, you know, off the top of my head, I'm thinking of like the small schools grants that are available, the dollars, I don't know where that is, I haven't been paying attention to it, but we've had mechanisms to-
So that's in this bill too, but that doesn't affect any of us.
Right, but it sends a contradictory message of promoting consolidation and also at the same time supporting-
They do address that in the bill.
Are there other topics that people are thinking of? Cindy?
I hope you'll add fair share, I mean, that's the proposal to essentially force an agency fee on all of our employees. And you can tell which way I stand by the language I just used, but it should continue to be a matter for negotiation.
And for those who might not be familiar with that, could you just give us an elevator description?
The propose, fair share is a new way of referencing, it's come up at least the last biennium and maybe even the one before, to require, and in this case, they're saying more than just school employees, to pay approximately eighty-five percent of the current union dues. All employees would be required to pay it, whether they're a member of the union or not. The theory being is that the union has negotiated a collective bargaining agreement that you all benefit from, so you should pay your fair share for the benefit you get from that contract. Currently, it's a matter that can be proposed and negotiated at the table, and some of the, in my opinion, conservative estimates is that this would provide an additional five hundred thousand dollars to Vermont NEA from some of our lowest-paid employees who choose not to pay because they simply can't afford to. And then, I think, and I haven't read the bill recently, but the summary I read yesterday said there's now a piece that would say, well, you can negotiate how you collect that. I don't even, I, I don't really think it's fair for my staff to be the one that has to go tell people that they're being forced to pay five hundred dollars a year, even though they didn't, they didn't sign on, because we do have language that says we will correct, collect it through payroll deduction.
As long as we're brainstorming, are there other ideas? And then if we don't have other ideas, we can take a few-minute break, so. And for the, Joan? And for the, Joan?
I would, I would add state aid to school construction.
State aid to school construction. Given that we haven't seen that in a long time. And what, what aspect of it? Reinstituting it?
You know, there's language that it won't be reinstituted until there's a formula to decide how to pay for it, or to decide not to pay for it. It's in the Capitol bill. And just to, to have all of the legislators here perspective, so the board's perspective would be really important. In the past, we've done 30% to parts of projects that qualify, 50% to some, 90% to fire, and 100% to sex services. In this year and the next year, we're expecting to pay a lot of the bills to, but schools wait quite a while for that, and they pay interest on that borrowed money.
Okay. Let's take a two-minute break and still start a couple of minutes early if we can. So, we'll call the meeting back to order, and Molly, this is your show, so, thank you. We're going to try to, just a reminder, we have an executive session, we need to leave the room and go next door. We're going to have, try to make that very brief, so we're going to try to get in the room next door by quarter of seven, so you can back, get back to your locals. Thank you, Molly.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
For those of you who, who are new and haven't been part of this before, this is a two-part evening of assessment and Kneecap results. There are my part, which is the big picture, CSSU results, and we look at, at our progress and our performance system-wide, and then you go to your local board meeting and hear about what that looks like at your, your local level. So, there are two parts to this. And then, within my part, for the CSSU overview, big grain size, I do two parts, and the first one's very short, and it's kind of the background of assessment, and what you want to know about how it guides instruction and intervention, professional development and action planning, that it's not just assessment for the sake of assessment. And then, part two is the gritty gritty of the Kneecap results. And having done this a few times, those of you who have been here for a while know that it used to be a very long presentation, all the percentages and, you know, decimal points and everything, and everybody gave me, thankfully, constructive feedback that if you create my, skinnied it up, which I've done, as well as to really just focus on the trends and what the big picture is. So, I will do that. In your packet, you already saw, there is minutia and there is detail, so feel free to burrow in, but just like I would tell my students, "Don't read it while I'm talking with you, please." But go back to it, because I won't read every single observation for you. I'm just going to tell you about the broad strokes. And I hope, I'll talk quickly, and I hope I leave a little time for Q and A, and if we run short, I'll figure out what would be the best vehicle to get your questions to me, rather than random everybody. I'll have to think about that a little bit. So, we're going to start with the first part, and that is the place of assessment. And what's typical, and you've seen before, is the assessment triangle, which has assessment on one point, instruction on another point, and professional development on another, and that indeed, assessment is part of a triangle, and that it doesn't exist all by itself. But I prefer a little bit more organic shape to the place of assessment and its intimate role in instruction. And in fact, in CSSU, we are, we're really seeing a terrific convergence of the two, and how they feed one another informatively. So, I see it as instruction and in assessment occurring in all kinds of ways, both formative, right as a teacher, a skilled teacher does, right in the course of teaching, in conferences and things like that, as well as end-of-unit assessments, and then the big stakes assessments like Kneecap, which then inform, those results then inform instruction. So, there are data teams where that information is analyzed, or the formative assessment from a classroom period is viewed, and new things are designed for instruction based on that data, and then assessment happens again, in that it's one continuous loop. So, I, I look at it that way, and then I talk about it that way with coordinators who then go back to schools for data teams. And then, on a, a bigger scale, assessment fuels all kinds of parts of CSSU. And I won't read all this, because you have, I'm sure, but there are pieces of what we do as an organization that are fueled by the data that we collect in the assessment, such as professional development, such as data analysis, more professional development, a phase of action planning, of goal-setting by administrators, by my work with writing a grant that provides funding for our professional development, board retreats after you see the data, thinking then, on my part, what, does it make sense to offer for summer professional development? The administrators go off on a retreat in the summer, they too use this to inform what our goals will be for the year, and then back it goes. So, I, I see this, rather than the isolated points on a triangle, as a, a big continuous loop. Okay. So, we'll talk about the data. I am going to do several aspects of that. First, I start with our performance compared to the state, and I'll do that rather quickly because CSSU is always, always exceeds the state, but I want you to have that perspective. I talk a little bit about reading math history over time, and then I will delve in, these are larger grain sizes, then I'll delve into each area. And I want to say upfront that, to skinny up the presentation from the massive packet that it was three years ago, I have taken out some slides, and one set of slides, I just really want to stress this, one set of slides I took out is comparisons of our students on IEPs, and I am concerned about what that might imply to you. So, I'm saying right now, that doesn't mean I don't care, and that you shouldn't care. So, I have observations to share about the progress of those students, but I'm not going to spend a long time on trends from 2008. I'm going to tell you about that, though. So, just want to say that front. So, just for those of you who either don't remember or aren't that familiar, and this is your first time around with this, just a tiny bit on Kneecap. Kneecap is the New England Common Assessment Program. We've been giving it in grades three through eight and 11 since 2005. Kneecap is a standardized system, that's our one sort of big stakes assessment system, and it's done, given in four states, New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, and Maine. And next year will be the final Kneecap administration, with the exception of science, because the following year, Sback will take over, and half the country will be giving Sback. So, it'll be a higher stakes assessment. And for you to see how the results are reported, we receive proficiency levels for students, those who perform with distinction, those who perform with proficiency, and those who are below. So, it's a four, three, two, one. And with that, when I dig into the numbers from the state, I get percentages, which I've passed on to you in the, in the notes. And those of you following along, if you are, I always give you the packet ahead of time, and then I change it. I fuss with it every single night until I present, so it isn't identical to what you have, just so you know.
Okay.
So, just a quick comparison, first for the conglomeration of third through eighth grade, and I'm just going to talk, what are the takeaways from each slide, so that we can move along? So, clearly, at every area of administration, CSSU exceeds the state, and in some places more so than others, but clearly, third through eighth grade performance is very, its strongest is in math and reading, so you can look at that compared with the state. Eighth grade writing is right up there. What you also take away from this is the fact that our fifth grade writing is something we're going to be focusing on, and I'll delve into the writing section and talk to you a bit about that. And history for third through eighth grade, so over time, since Kneecap started, this slide, I think, is very revealing. So, we're talking about eight years of data here, and what you see, and these actually are relatively small blips, is a very continuous line of stability in math and reading for third and eighth grade, uh, third through eighth grade. So, there are some subtle changes. When you talk to the measured progress people who give us our, our results and mash some of the numbers for us ahead of time, really, the changes in results are not that significant until you're talking about a 5% change. And also, you want to look for trends, so a one-year blip is sometimes just a blip, that it was that class of students. So, what is more reliable and accurate for us to look at is trends over time. So, we'll, we'll look at that as we go along. So, reading achievement, since 2008 for third through eighth grade, has improved about 4%, and that's the red line. And you can see that 80% of third through eighth grade students achieved proficient and above in math, and they gained about 2% over last year. So, we'll go on to 11th grade, and again, the first thing that pops out is that our 11th grade students exceed the state in all areas. And another thing that pops out is the number of students who achieve in reading with distinction in this high bracket. And that number has increasing, has been increasing over the years. I think it's, it's 46% have achieved with distinction in 11th grade reading this year, and that's 13% higher than how the rest of the state scores in that bracket. So, we will talk further about each of these scores, but you can see, you know, what, what things are the highest, and for CBU, that's their writing and reading. And the long-range history, I think, is pretty revealing. We have 87% of the 11th graders achieving proficiency and above in reading, and so they're way up here with a really nice improvement trend, and that's a pretty strong one. What you also see here is a pretty significant gap between reading and math, and that's, that's something for us to have a look at. So, I'll, I'll leave it there. There is a discrepancy over time, an average discrepancy of about 38% between reading and math.
That's pretty consistent across everybody.
That's the thing, that math at 11th grade across the state, and that's why it's important to see the state page as well, that's true, but then there's going to be some more information for us to really, they just, we also, while it's good to know how the state performs, it's also really good for us to think about so, but we still want to raise the bar for us, so.
Molly, is there a common trend among the other three states in the Kneecap group?
A common trend around the math?
Well, is there the same problem with 11th grade math?
I actually don't-
And Rhode Island and Maine?
I don't know about the Rhode Island or New Hampshire or Maine results. I'm not really sure. I could investigate that for you.
Might be helpful enough.
All right. Okay, so we'll dig in, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
Well, I just think that I, you know, when I have looked at those results, I know that we tend to score like New Hampshire and higher than Maine and Rhode Island.
Oh, great, okay. I'll look at the shears and see what the trend is about. So, we'll dig into reading a little bit. What I tend to do is do a comparison also around comparable school districts, demographically. So, we look at where we are in comparison, and I also, for the last couple of years, we have enough data now that we can track a whole group of students from third grade to eighth grade, and look at that same group over time. That is very reliable data, because it's not a unique group that could have had a disproportionate number of, of something that created a data anomaly. So, that'll be great to look at, and I'm also going to comment on our students who live in poverty and our students on IEPs. And as many of you know, for four years, CSSU has been shining a light on the performance of students who live in poverty, because we, like the rest of the country, have a pretty big gap, so I'll comment on that as we go. So, here we are with third through eighth graders in reading. You can see that CSSU, along with Chittenden East, are ahead of our neighboring towns with similar demographics. We exceed all of the comparable districts, along with Chittenden East, at 85% proficient and above. For the high school in reading, you can see that South Burlington is 2% higher than CBU and Essex, who are the same, so very, very close. 2% is not statistically all that huge, so, very similar. So, here's the cohort data I was telling you about, where we follow a group of students all the way through and see what happens with them, because this is the same kiddos, and in fact, I take out any students who have left between third grade and eighth grade, so that they're not counted in there. So, these are just kiddos that were educated in any of our CSSU system, and in this case, there were 49 fewer students that left. So, this is a pretty significant piece of information here. See if I can, I know how to use this red light. Oh, that's fancy, okay. So, it's pretty clear that there's a gradual improvement trend and an enormous trend toward students moving into the, performing with distinction bracket. This is a great sign. This demonstrates a firm, solid reading program that has cohesion between grades, there isn't a dramatic dip along the way. So, currently, 92% over here of the eighth grade class performs with proficiency and above, and they started out, I think, at 78% over here. So, really nice trend and growth line.
Forty to 40 cohorts that got taken out or so? Do you know why did they drop out? Or, because that could drag your chart down.
Those are kids who moved out of our district.
Moved out, they didn't drop out.
No, 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 no. So, here we have the 11th grade reading trend, again, this is cohort data, so we're following fifth graders, the same group of kiddos, all the way through, and you see some similar consistency. So, I'll say again, with little changes, but basically, a firm, strong, cohesive program, even as they go through the leap. There's a leap for kids when they leave eighth grade and they go to the high school. A leap in all kinds of things, and oftentimes, there's a little decrease. And there is a little decrease, but it's not all that significant. So, again, I point out that there is an increasing, when you get here, number of students who achieve with distinction at the high school in reading, so that's great for us.
Maybe I'm missing something here. So, this group is taking a Kneecap every year?
This group is taking a Kneecap every year until eighth grade, from third, well, from third, but I took them from fifth to eighth, and then they don't have another Kneecap until 11th in reading. Reading and math are given third through eighth, and then again at 11th. Science is four, eight, and 11th, and writing is five, eight, and 11th, just to confuse you.
Okay, so it's just, yeah, just the two subjects that are every year?
That's right. So, I can't show great cohort data for all, everything, because I don't have this amount of data for every, that follows them very well. Yeah. I tried it in writing, I'm going to show you. Good question. Okay. And then, to talk a little bit about our students living in poverty, I think that this graph is really significant. Number one, and I'm sure you have the takeaways I do, that we, we do have a really big gap, and it is, I'm happy to report, and that's another takeaway, it's shrinking, and we are making progress. This is the year that we said, "Hold on, we have a problem, we have to take a look at this," and we really put focus into this. We brought in specialists, we looked at the data, we discovered things that we should be doing with these kiddos, on and on. And that there was no excuse, no excuse. So, the happy news is we really are gaining, and we have to continue to work on this, because it could easily, it's fragile growth, but it's pretty steady, 19% over eight years. So, it's steady and good to see, but you can see we still have a gap. With 11th grade, similarly, and their growth has really happened here with some continuity. It's great, 4% growth over four years, over, improved 4%, excuse me, 23% over six years growth. But again, you can see that the gap, it is getting smaller, and they really have made significant gains in the last three years.
And this isn't a cohort thing, this is just-
No. That's right, exactly. Yeah. So, the conclusions around reading, the big takeaways is that we really, our steady work with the population that lives in poverty is coming to fruition. We are seeing growth there, and we're very excited by that, but we can't stop focusing on it, and that's across the board, third through 11th grade. You can see that reading achievement in CSSU in general is sturdy- You can see that reading achievement in CSSU in general is sturdy and strong, and that despite that, we continue to make growth. Let's see. And good to know that in terms of students achieving with distinction, so that's the hardest part of these exams, that 30% do third through eighth grade, and 46% of our 11th graders achieve with distinction. Students on IEPs have steadily improved, they've improved about 7% over five years, and they're beginning to exceed the state. And I will tell you that had I put the charts up, you would have noticed that in their history, we, just like our students living in poverty, at one point, we did not exceed the state level, the state competence in this area, which was a great concern to us, and we're just starting to break out of that. So, we'll delve into writing in much the same way, okay? So, in terms of comparable school districts demographically, South Burlington, this is our fifth grade writing data, and this I have to show separately, okay? So, there's going to be fifth, eighth, and 11th. And you can see our fifth graders are in second place there, and there's about a 5% difference with South Burlington. That's something to look at. So, good to know, though, that fifth grade writing, to your point, Jean, earlier, fifth grade writing across the state is abysmal, and our fifth grade writing is not in any great shades either. So, it is an area we're going to focus on.
So, that was your whole population, right?
All fifth graders, because my presentation, you came in a little bit late, Giovanna, but this is the SU picture, so we take all the data and wrap it together and look at us as a system, and then you'll go to your meeting and do your...
I just didn't know that you weren't excluding the low levels.
No, I'll just do that in that chart, yeah. So, as far as eighth grade goes, again, we have South Burlington performing in first place. I walked into a meeting not too long after the kneecap data came out, and South Burlington was just so excited, "We beat you!" So, they're very excited. And there's this thing, each year, we really check this out. And CSSU, at this point, over here, in third place, we've gained certainly in a 5% increase over last year, but we are about 10%, our eighth graders are about 10% behind South Burlington this year, so something for us to keep an eye on.
Excuse me, Molly?
Yes.
Can you define writing?
Can I define writing? Oh, boy!
Is it critical writing, is it creative writing, is it research writing?
At what stage? I imagine you're not asking the fifth graders to do science critical, but they might be doing some book report writing. How is writing?
So, they are given some text, and they're asked to respond to it in a variety of ways. And there's at least one long piece of writing that they do, where they're expected to do paragraphing, they're supposed to have a main thesis, they're supposed to have a conclusion, a lead sentence in each paragraph, so there's one of those, and then there are several shorter, where they're doing a strong paragraph. Some of it's informational writing, and as we get into ESPEC, there'll be much more of that than there is, and some of it is response to a piece of information. Sometimes the reading is lengthy, an entire page of reading. So, part of the writing is also good reading, which our students are really great at, by the way, but, yeah. Does that help?
So, in general, they're just developing a narrative?
Some of it's narrative and some of it's expository, yeah. Okay, so, we talked about this one, and here's 11th grade writing. CBU is number one. And you can see what I've written here, that they have about a 3% improvement over last year and are cooking along with writing, lots of improvement there. So, this should give you the combined look, though. I wonder about putting this in, because I know it's kind of confusing, but I'll try to take you through it. So, writing is red, and if you just look at that for a minute, your takeaway here is... Watch, if I can do this. This year was a pilot year, so we took the test, but we don't get the data back. There, there, and there. So, when you see a line like that, you know systemically, since we're looking at this, that we have a problem with fifth grade writing. There's something where the interconnectedness between grade levels and our approach there... Fifth grade, where we will shine a light on fifth grade this coming year, and across the state, they need to do the same thing. So, that's what that indicates. And you can see our eighth grade writing is typically our best grade-level performance, okay? And they're a little more solid and doing pretty well, really. And you can see high school writing is marching right there, just a steady improvement line, really, you could look like that. So, improvement and some interesting information there about fifth grade, for sure. So, this is tricky to do for cohort because of what I just said. In 2009, and every four years, our students take the writing kneecap, but we don't get the results back, because they're testing questions for the following year. So, this isn't all that complete, but I put it in just so that I could look at it, and you can see that there is a bit of a drop from the fifth grade writers to... These are the same kiddos in 11th grade. So, while 11th grade writing's really improving, I think we're going to want to look a little bit at what happens between middle school and high school. Last year, I looked at our cohort data for writing this particular slide, and similarly, there's a slight drop, so we'll have a look at that. Here are our students living in poverty. Writing is lower than our reading scores in general, so these are the kids who are... None of these students are living in poverty, and these are the green-lined students who are. You can see that there's some inconsistency, and then we have a little growth curve going on here. So, that's good to see, generally, just an area we still absolutely have to focus on, for sure. We have about a 7% improvement or 8% improvement over three years for this population.
Question about sort of the socioeconomic gap.
Yeah.
Do you have data comparing CSSU to other districts like the state that's normalized for the socioeconomic status? In other words, compared by apples and oranges? In other words, how much by apples and oranges does it function just having a better demographic?
Well, I don't know if I'm answering this the way you'd want me to, so ask again, but where I'm comparing our performance of all of our kids, whether they're free and reduced or not, with other towns, those are the towns that demographically, socioeconomically have similarities to ours.
Right, now, just can't go back to the beginning of the first state.
Yeah, yeah. So, ask your question again, please, I'm sorry.
Just, sorry, half answer. If, when we compare South to the state, how much of that is demographics and how much of that is...
Right, okay, right. And that is why I put in those other slides, exactly, so we could also see where we stand with our demographic brothers and sisters.
Just a quick thought, is it fair to say that a lot of this comes back to parental engagement in terms of those households, maybe that are more advantaged, have more help comparing?
Well, absolutely, those households have an advantage, but our educational system can overcome a lot of that, and there's proof of that all over the country.
Right, I mean, the gap between these bars is that it's obviously not being overcome entirely by the curriculum and school, by the way.
Well, we have, there's evidence that we can overcome that. It's an issue for those kiddos, it makes it harder, it's a struggle, they don't get their homework done, they lose their books, but we, as an educational system, can overcome that, and I really, really believe that, and there's evidence of it all over the place. So, that's what we're working toward.
Last question?
Yeah.
Huge drop-off from sort of K through eighth math performance to 11th grade?
Yes.
Might that, do you expect that there'll be some similar dynamic where maybe you're getting beyond some parents' comfort zone or ability to help with math, and also the kids on your own?
That's probably true, but we should be dealing with that. That's not okay for those kids.
That's...
Right, yeah, that's a factor, but it behooves us to take care of those kids, hence the safety nets that we need to build in, the support systems for kiddos who are fragile learners, absolutely, yeah. It's a lot to overcome, but it can be done. Yeah, good point.
Molly, if I could just ask something, there's also some speculation that by 11th grade, some cynicism develops amongst the students about the kneecaps, since they really don't have any skin in the game. And I think what would be more interesting in a lot of ways for high school students is the SAT scores or ACT scores, where they care. You know, I can speak personally for my kids, they didn't care when they took the kneecaps in 11th grade. And, you know, yes, they went and took them, but I think that there is a drop off there that can be attributed to.
I think that what they, we look at the whole population, I think it's fair to compare to other schools with different, whatever cuts you want, but I think it's been a real shift in the CSSU in the last, you know, I don't know, I shouldn't say five or 10 years, but that, I don't really care how other schools do it on their free and reduced lunch kids. We have an obligation, and we're probably, if we lead the state, I'd be thrilled to have the best, best, best numbers on that possible, so that's, I'm so excited to see these trends are really, really positive, so...
Yeah, I mean, I feel like if we exceed the state all the time across the board, why wouldn't our subgroup populations do the same? And clearly, four years ago, I know when I started looking at this data, we were really in the bucket around that. So, those kids should equally exceed the state, or certainly exceed the state, the way...
The whole rest of the schools in Vermont and everywhere else to say, "Well, CBU can do it, why can't?" All the other schools.
Back to Russ's comment, have those other standardized tests been worked into?
Oh, absolutely, so you get to go back to your local meeting and hear about what's going on.
About the SATs and the ACTs?
And the report out, yes, absolutely. One thing to know, though, that, you know, Sean, I think he's here and could make comment about it, but a couple of years ago, Sean really took this on with a vengeance with high school kiddos, and sat them down and gave them a good chat, if I'm speaking out of turn, you can correct me, Sean, but gave them a chat about the seriousness of these, "We're in the newspapers, your teachers are being held up to the..." And really, talked about all the drawing that went on in the margins and the lackadaisical attitude. And that year, there was a tremendous spike in scores, and I think I was here to say that, that year. And since then, their curve for improvement, improved performance, has been noticeable. So, whatever that speech is and the weight that Sean carries with students, that's wonderful. You know, we do want to look, though there's the SAT to look at, we do want to look at one test over time, otherwise, it is apples and oranges. So, we want to see, how do our students do when they leave middle school using the same test? So, it's a great point, and I think to some extent, Sean has really taken a hold of it.
I mean, the theory would be that, you know, the colleges, which I assume is kind of all here, so you have the kids that are successful in college, aren't going to really look at their kneecaps, so maybe this is the tool for what our, you know, the real measure is, maybe the real measure should be the ACTs or the SATs, because that's the game right there.
Yeah, and I think it's another indicator. I don't think it tells us the whole story, personally.
Oh, no, no, I think it's just...
And I think the fact that these can be broken down into areas where we concentrate our instruction, and they're also based on our standards, so it's a way for us to weigh our instructional practice.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think it's a great indicator, and I think the SATs are another indicator.
Yeah.
Molly, on this slide...
Yes.
Is it significant in any way that in between 2010 and 2011, the not FRL declined by 20 points, and, but the FRL actually improved a little?
Yeah, it is significant, you know, and this, again, this is that fifth grade group, their writing is very inconsistent, and programmatically across the SU, we really are going to take a look at what's going on there, and yet, our students living in poverty made some gains. That's wonderful, so, yes, but now we have to look at our whole, you know, each school's fifth grade program and build some cohesion, yeah. Yeah, it is significant, thanks for mentioning that. Eighth grade, you can see overall, eighth grade writing scores are higher in general, and then you see our students who are not in the poverty category, and then you see those who are. We're not doing quite as well with these kiddos, and the writing tasks get harder, but we have a lot of fluctuation. So, this group actually performs just like the state at this point, and we really want to lift them up from there. So, it's a little problem area. 11th grade, look at the difference. If you start here and go like that, I think it's about a 26, there it is, 26% over six years, so tremendous improvement here. Likewise, for all of 11th grade writers. And they have not always been here, you can see where they've come from, so lots going on there. That's why, Russ, I say to you, I think that their attention to this test is much better than it used to be, because we wouldn't see this improvement otherwise. Am I drilling that point home? Okay, all right. So, the writing summary, I'm not going to read all of these. I think the big takeaway is that by and large, we see, again, great improvement for our students living in poverty, that we have a fifth grade inconsistency going on, and we're going to dig in and figure that out. Don't, I'm not really sure what's happening there, that our 11th graders have made a 10% gain over four years, that is very significant. Let's see, any other huge takeaways? I think those are the biggies. Math performance, I'm going to do the very same thing, but I'm adding a few pieces here, because part of the math initiative that we've been working on for the last four years involved this next step, which was to really delve into middle-level math performance, and also involve more students who were ready for Algebra I, so I want to give you some of that data as well. So, here's our comparable data. You can see that our third through eighth graders perform higher than the other similar neighboring towns of similar demographics. 80% of our CSSU third through eighth graders achieve proficient and above, and they are 85% in reading, so they don't have a big gap between reading and math performance. Here's our 11th grade, Essex, and then CBU and Mount Mansfield. So, 55% of our CBU 11th graders are proficient and above, and they're about 6% below Essex. Okay, here's that cohort data, again. So, again, the big takeaway is pretty darn consistent, that this would imply to you and does demonstrate that the math program for third through eighth grade hasn't changed for this very same group of kids. They're steady, steady, steady. There's, I think, I remember, yeah, a 1% difference between math achievement for them in third grade and in eighth grade. Yeah, would we like to see this moving up a little bit? Yes. But I do think about any time you involve a system in a big change, which our math initiative, let's face it, it is very big. We're hitting math at all levels, pedagogically, math curriculum, philosophically, new math materials, we've got all kinds of things happening. Normally, there's an implementation dip when you do that on a big scale, and we haven't had that, and I think that speaks to our teachers and to the cohesion that we've built and the rapid change that's been going on, and we didn't fall off, so, good to see. We have an 11th grade cohort, and so we have the same, this is our current 11th graders as fifth graders, and here we do see the changeover from middle-level and earlier to 11th grade math performance. So, it declines, and I looked at last year's cohort data, it does the same thing. So, it's something to work on. So, the news here, and when I do my conclusions, I'll tell you this again, but I'll tell you this right now, is that we are emphasizing, we have moved the math initiative to the high school, the math department's embarking, the whole department is embarking on the best practices work that the elementary schools have done, and will be engaged in studio follow-up with coaching. So, I'm anticipating that things will change here, and that there'll be a more cohesive cohesion between our middle-level program, where they're getting all of that student discourse and engagement in math, and the ninth and 10th and 11th grade programs. So, to get back to another point of the math initiative was to really think through algebra, and whether we were giving enough kids the opportunity to take it as eighth graders, and whether we were really recognizing the fact that in the research, it's all about, and in the Common Core, it's that this is no longer like an extraordinary thing for eighth graders to be doing, they should be doing this. And it's our job to prepare more and more eighth graders to be successful. So, in fact, we are moving in that direction. This is simply to show you the enrollment change since 2008, and you can see 29% increase in the number of students who enroll, but this, what is really more important, I realized, is how successful they were once they enrolled. So, you can see here that there are 19 more students in geometry as freshmen, so that means they accomplished algebra... means they accomplished Algebra I as 8th graders in this year, right here, than this year where we increased that number by 19 students. So we're excited to see this gradual shift. I anticipate that this will keep marching up, and that's partly because of the math initiative that has really started at the K8 level. So with our new materials and our best practices pedagogy work, algebra is starting in kindergarten there, and they don't even know that, but there's far more algebra content going on in a gradual way, building toward an increasing number, almost all, by the time we finish this, I hope, of our 8th graders being well-prepared to do well in algebra, which will be embedded in the 8th grade program. Our students living in poverty, you can see these, this is the 3rd through 8th grade, so again, quite solid, a little dip here, and then you can see that our students living in poverty, they also kind of simmered along at the very same line there. So they've improved 6% over five years, but maybe not at the rate that we saw for writing and reading. So that's something for us to have a look at.
Molly, can I ask you one question?
Yes, yes.
Have you looked at the success rate, in other words, the number of students in algebra going up? What is the success rate percentage look like? Successfully completing algebra?
That's this one. So if they went into geometry or seminar, that means they completed Algebra I successfully. So we have just basically an increased number of students who have gone into algebra and have gone into seminar. So all in all, gradually, more and more students going into the higher level math as freshmen. So 11th grade students in poverty, you can see this is a struggle, the gap is bigger, the math is harder, and we have to work harder. We've had a really nice gradual increase here, and then a little drop off. These are different groups of kids, so to be fair, but you do look at trends, and there's something humongous going on here. Those are big steps. So work's being done, and we have to continue to do more work here. So the takeaways, again, I'm only going to do some of these. The big takeaway is that we do have a very steady 3rd through 8th grade math program. You don't see a lot of change, it's cohesive, transitions from grade to grade, sort of rock solid, would be a fair thing to say. We have a disparity, about 32%, an average of 32% disparity between 11th grade reading and math. So that's something for us to look at, and again, this emphasis on the math department coming up, which will be this summer in June, we'll begin that process, we want to close that gap. I think I'll stop there, except to talk a little bit about the students on IEPs. Their growth, 3rd through 8th grade, has been utterly flat in math, and is something we really do have to, have to shake up a bit. They exceed the state, which is good, which they hadn't for quite some time, but not by much. So that's another area that we have to focus on. All right, and just a little bit of science here. Not too bad, okay. And I'm not doing every chart for science, because I just looked at the clock, but let's look at, let's look at 4th, which tends to be and is the kneecap that we do the best on, and you can see we continue to, and that's great. So grade 4 improved 7% over four years, grade 8 improved 18%. Here's grade 8, right here, and it really marches up, but you can see there's a gap there, and we really need to emphasize 8th grade science, and 11th grade has improved 12%, and here they are. So we see improvement for sure, but still room to grow. Right here, when we saw our science results, and I think it was my first year, we, we got very worried, I was scared to give you the presentation. It was really worrisome, and we developed an action plan and devoted specific attention to inquiry, which is the area in our assessments that was flat out horrible, and earth science, and those were our areas that we were troubled about. Those have both improved dramatically, we developed an inquiry task assessment that's formative, that's given across the 3rd through 8th grade schools, grades. So we're doing things, but I think we still have some work to do, and we will continue to work on that.
Molly, I'm sorry, can you, what do you attribute that rather significant difference in the performance between fourth grade and fifth grade, upper grades? It's rather shocking.
It is, it is. And actually, across the state, it's like that, so that's one thing to give us perspective, that it isn't just us, but we expect more of our kiddos than that. I'm not sure what that's about, I don't, I know, of course, that the test is more rigorous, there's much more inquiry, and there, the tasks are, are long, they're like, some of them are seven-part tasks, and some of it's test-taking. Pure and utter, don't stop after the fifth part, keep going. Or there are some things, when we analyzed the data, where we saw that students sometimes just, just because it was so darn long, they just gave up. So there's some test-taking that we need to accentuate with our students, and I think we have to just further concentrate on, on their science. Which, you know, I think also we're having trouble with fitting enough science into our day. We're really accentuating a long literacy block, uninterrupted. We're accentuating now even more so a much longer math block in order to do, we've got way increased rigor going on in math, so we're, I'm asking all the schools to expand that time, and pretty soon, social studies is like this, and then there's music, and there's art, and science also gets the squeeze, so I think that's part of it. One thing the Common Core is telling us to do is to integrate, that we need to do more, of course, we have to keep our, our inquiry going and our science experiments and all of that, but we need to do more building in of our science reading and writing with our literacy time, or else we really don't have enough time. So I think that's part of it. Okay, final conclusions. And I think, I, I think, since you all have to see your pack, I'm just going to very briefly say we have many things to be proud of. We have improvement across the board. I'm not saying we don't have places to work, and that's good, because then I get to keep my job, because we have things to work on. So it's all, it's all okay. Our biggest accomplishments clearly are the fact that we have improvement in every single area, and that we have tremendous growth with our students living in poverty, and that is something to just raise the flag about. There are more things here, but I know that everyone's getting worried. And I do want to remind you that we have areas that we are going to focus on this year. 5th grade writing, absolutely. Science, 8th and 11th grade, absolutely. High school math, absolutely. And continuing to really delve into what's going on with our students on IEPs and our students living in poverty, we hope to just keep that line going. I want to end with just showing you not reading all of the ways that we are attacking what we're doing, just briefly. RTI is part of it, the fact that we have a tiered system for intervening with fragile learners, our data-driven decision-making that helps bring all this data to teachers through our math and literacy coordinators, we lost without them to bring this alive, through our work with VCAT, the science initiative that I think we're going to embolden this year, you know, we've had it for a while, we're going to wake that up and have a look, and then this very extensive math initiative that's, will go on, continue for quite some time. I want to end with this. Linda Darling-Hammond, whom actually Elaine and I got to see in person last year at a conference, who is just this incredible brain and researcher, sorry, from Stanford, she's the person, and this, this quote is everywhere right now, where her research is very clear that you need to put your emphasis on training the teachers, and it doesn't stop when you get out of college. It's just improvement, 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 which I take great pride in saying that CSSU is a growth organization, and our teachers are beginning to live that. So she, she clearly has found that by having well-prepared teachers, that's what makes the difference for student achievement, and that the well-prepared teacher can overcome the influences that you were talking about, Eric, that can overcome student background factors, poverty, issues around ELL and language use, and their minority status. So that's where we concentrate like crazy, the, the coordinators and myself. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Molly, and I'm sorry we're pushing out of time. I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session for negotiations, and we're going to transition to another room in a second.
Second.
And if other board members would join us, we're just going to do a brief.